It's all about the fee. Did the people get paid?
Good evening, welcome to the town of Eastchester zoning Board of Appeals meeting for January. Today is Tuesday, January 9th. We start our meetings with a pledge of allegiance. Please rise. Okay. I usually take this opportunity to go over some of the ground rules for our meeting, but before I do that, I just want to recognize that our board member Mark DiMarco unfortunately, due to his time constraints, could no longer serve on the board, so he has served his resignation. And I just want to thank him for his more than 10 years of service to the board and his sharp wit and his dedication to what is a volunteer position for community service. And having put two daughters through Michigan, I certainly didn't want to listen to him tonight, spiked the football, so I guess maybe that's a benefit to not having him. Otherwise, we're going to miss him. So, Mark, thank you for your service, and we shall move on with tonight's meeting. So firstly, tonight's meeting is conducted under Roberts Rules of Parliamentary Order. But that's almost every governmental and quasi-governmental tribunal uses either Cushing or Roberts Rules. Couple of things to note for the listening public. Firstly, action is taken based upon motion, resolution, and a vote, and parties will have the opportunity to address in a public hearing the board by recognition of the chair. Secondly, we know it all the time, that no new correspondence is accepted after the close of any public hearing. This happened particularly during the COVID era where people were emailing in commentary, and to this day, we still get commentary, so that the public understands, you're certainly free to email. Those emails become part of the public record, but they're not going to be heard tonight. If you want to be heard tonight, as many of you are here, you're here. So there is no correspondence subsequent to the closing of any public hearing. I am going to call the roll in a moment, but before I do that, I make a motion to approve the minutes of the November 14, 2023 meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. We have two matters on tonight for resolution, and because we have a four-member board, the applicants have an option to adjourn, and they both have requested to adjourn to the next meeting. So that is 600 White Plains Road and 2 Cross Hill Road. Both have been adjourned on by the applicant's application, and that is on consent. Also, we have one matter of old business that has been adjourned, also on consent, 203 Beach Street subdivision. Okay. So we have seven new items of business on the calendar, so I will ask if the applicant's here and if you're ready to proceed. The first is Eleven Right Place.
Yep.
And are you ready to proceed?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Crema Cafe, 470 White Plains Road.
Yes.
Ready to proceed? Okay. Total Form Fitness. Ready to proceed? Okay. Hillside Place.
Yes.
Ready to proceed?
Yes.
Okay. 122 Montgomery.
Ready to proceed.
Okay, thank you. 360 White Plains Road.
Yes.
Ready to proceed? Okay. And 249 Main Street.
Yes.
And ready to proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. So for new matters, just to kind of give you an idea of how we proceed here, your matter, your application, your documentation, any commentary by the public is all Mark submitted. It's all part of the public record, and it can be viewed at any time before, during, or after the board meeting. So I, particularly when we have a large calendar, I caution applicants, you don't need to sit here and read your application. It's been reviewed by the board. It won't hurt your application, but it won't help. I would probably suggest that you just summarize your application, and then the board generally has an opportunity to ask questions or make comments. Thereafter, there'll be, probably be a motion to allow the public to be heard, and if the public's heard, you'll have an opportunity, and seeing a large number of people today, you'll come up. When recognized, you'll give your name and address for the record, and we'll let you comment on the application, and then the board would, the applicant would have an opportunity to make any commentary thereafter, and then the board will be heard again. Couple of notes about public, because we encourage it. It's an important part of community involvement. I just want to caution whether you are for or against an application, that it's not the applicant that's being heard, it's the application. So you would want to stick to the tests. We hear three things. The vast majority of what we hear are area variances with a five-part test. We occasionally hear a use variance that has a three-part test, and we sometimes are called upon to make an interpretation. We're a quasi-judicial tribunal. We are bounded by law. Those tests are not something we make up. So they're very specific, and I would ask that you tailor your commentary to the application at hand. Having said that, our first item of new business is Eleven Right Place. The applicant can come up, state your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Members of the board, Mr. Chair, thank you for hearing this application today. My name is Brian Hopkins. I'm the architect for Avinash Shawani. She's the owner of Eleven Right Place, and the proposably for you today is for two variances. Both are existing non-conforming for an existing front yard setback and a side yard setback. There we go. So I'll try to make this as short and sweet as possible. So basically, Avinash, she's an elderly woman. She's looking to expand her home so she can make it an oasis for her grandchildren. So really, the project itself is an extension. You can see the addition in the back. It's a kitchen that we're going to be adding to the home, as well as a bathroom and a closet. In addition to that, because she's elderly, she's in her 80s, she needs access to her home. Currently, there are steps leading up to the front yard. She'd like to take the side yard, which currently has an existing landing and a few steps up to it, and turn that into a ramp. So that is the existing non-conforming side yard setback that we're seeking. We're basically going to be taking a landing with steps and turning it into a ramp. And the front, we're not making any changes to it, but it's an existing non-conforming So let's, I can zoom in here. So just to give you an idea of what this is going to look like, these are the two renderings of the addition and ramp area here. And from the other angle, that's the addition with a back patio. So if we're looking just at zoning, this is the required 30-yard setback, and you can see that the existing building is currently within that setback, so that's the nonconformance that we're going to seek to resolve. And also, on the side yard setback, you can see that previously, or currently, there exists a set of steps. We're going to look to make that a ramp to access the home, and also to access the backyard Yeah, I mean, that's pretty much the project.
Yeah.
I think I'll just take questions.
Okay, well, thank you for your presentation, and that was one of the better schematics we've seen in a while. Mr. Kalan, any questions or comments?
Just a question, is the ramp ADA compliant?
Yes.
Okay.
One to 12.
Anything further?
No.
Mr. Miller?
None.
Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
I don't have anything. I make a motion to open the matter to the public for a public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Because I'm obligated to. Mr. Kalan, anything?
Spoke my piece.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
I think you've answered the five-part test to my satisfaction. The only thing I have is a motion to adjourn your application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Okay, new business item number two, 2334, this is Crema Cafe, 470 White Plains Road. Name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening, my name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Crema Cafe, the proposed tenant at 470 White Plains Road. And the proposed work area is highlighted in yellow on the site plan, which is here. The proposed scope of work will include a change of use from a dry cleaners to a coffee shop, and the coffee shop requires a special permit for a type-one food service establishment. This application was presented to the planning board on December 7, 2023, for review of the special permit, and it was referred to the zoning board for consideration of an area variance for the off-street parking requirement. The existing parking is currently non-conforming, with a total of 56 spaces required and 11 spaces provided. The proposed change in use will increase the required parking by two parking spaces to a total requirement of 58 spaces, and 11 spaces will be provided, a deficiency of 47 spaces. All the proposed work is internal. There is no proposed changes to the exterior of the building. The proposed use will comply with all the standard and individual requirements for a type-one food service establishment. The proposed change in use will create a minimal increase to the existing non-conforming parking, and there is municipal parking available across the street to meet the additional parking requirements. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yanacito. Before I go to the board, I just want to clarify that the use that you're proposing is as of right. It's just that the use change triggers a different parking requirement. Is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you. Mr. Kalan, any questions or comments?
Hours of operation?
So the hours of operation for this space are Monday through Sunday, Monday through Sunday, 7:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.
Okay.
And then on Fridays and Saturdays, they will open for a short period in the evenings from 6:00 to 9:00, just to serve coffee and desserts.
See, that is what troubles me. I was fine with the 3:00, because that parking lot is active as heck after 5:30, 6:00, because of what goes on down the street, across the street. You've got Barata, you've got Mickey's, you've got Piper's, you've got the other restaurant on the same side of the street. So, you know, you're asking, you know, for an 80% variance, which you would think, based upon a municipal lot, would be fine, but at those hours, like, if it was just till 3:00 during the day, I know that the lot has plenty of space. At night, I'm not so sure about that, you know? So I'm surprised to hear that it's going to be open on, you know, those nights until 9:00. I understand why. It's just surprising, because that, to me, at least from my perspective, gives me some grief on the variance. So that's my...
Can I just provide?
Sure, please, go ahead.
You know you can, John.
So I think, you know, in the evenings, the rest of the businesses in that strip mall will be closed down, so they do have 10 spaces on their property, which they can utilize. And this particular space only requires five parking spaces. I mean, that's the code, five parking spaces for this small space. They're not going to have many, they're only going to have like five tables in this space. It's not going to have a lot of people coming in. Most of the food will be takeout.
I understand, but that, what I'm, my point is, is as you can hopefully see, is that lot is active. So even five spots is a lot of spots after 5:00. So, you know, that's my point.
Yeah, and I still think that the five spots will be available onsite after 6:00.
That's what you get paid to say, and that's what I get volunteered to say.
Fantastic.
Anything further?
No.
Mr. Miller?
Just a couple of quick ones. John, what exactly is the restaurant going to be? Is it going to be like a Starbucks? Are we talking a gelato shop? And what are we talking about?
So it's going to have a hood, so they'll prepare, you know, sandwiches and breakfast sandwiches and coffee in the morning and the afternoon, and then in the evenings on the weekends will just be coffee and desserts and gelato.
What kind of traffic you think we're looking at as far as the crowds?
Well, hopefully in the morning, hopefully in the morning, they're very crowded, so that they can, you know...
Well, you're saying there's 10 tables, or five tables, so...
Yeah, so most of it will be carryout. They'll walk in, they'll order a bagel or egg and cheese sandwich and leave. The five tables, it's only 10, maybe 10 people sitting at these tables, tops, who are going to hang around.
So you figure maybe five tables, 10 people, 15 people, so...
10 people, and then maybe another five people walking in and out.
Maybe 10 cars at most, we're talking?
Well, 10...
They want more, come on, John.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure. I mean, we don't, I mean, you guys have an idea how many cars might be coming to this place? Focus is mainly on the kids.
Well, can you come up with, the stenographer's never going to be able to get any of this. Come up and give your name and address for the record, and you can proceed.
Hi, John, my name is Dominic Montemuro, 55 Clinton Place, New Rochelle, New York. I'm one of the owners. The focus was mainly on children. I know that the diner had closed across the street, and a bunch of buddies of mine, they have kids that are in the high schools, but they're, you know, they're too young to, you know, really venture too far out. So the main focus at night was gelato, just a place for, you know, kids. That's why we were only planning on staying open between, call it 5:30, 6:00 to about 9:00. If it's an issue, it's definitely something my partner and I could discuss and just keep it to the mornings, but that's really what the focus was. So, I mean, if it's a group of young kids that are there in town, you know, we know there's going to be a police presence because of, you know, the other establishments in the area as far as the bars and stuff. So, yeah, so that's really where our head was when we wanted to stay open, you know, on Friday, Saturday evenings, was, you know, even if we incorporated small paninis or something like that, literally, like something to, you know, take place, substitute the loss of the diner.
Okay. I think the point I'm trying to get at is, if we're looking for a younger crowd, there's not going to be a lot of cars. If we're looking for...
Yeah, mostly a younger, yeah. It would be a younger crowd at night, go there, get ice cream on the weekends, go home with their parents. So I would say that, you know, I would assume 10 cars would even be excessive as far as, you know, dining in. We figured more foot traffic, you know, with kids, you know, coming in, hanging out inside, giving them a place to be, you know, like a safe, you know, a safer option than, you know, walking around town. Okay, I'm good.
Okay. Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
I don't have anything at this time.
Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Kalan?
Nothing else.
Miller?
No.
Conway?
No.
Again, you've adequately addressed the five-part test to my satisfaction. I am going to make a motion to adjourn this application for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item three, 23-35, Total Form Fitness, 95 Montgomery Avenue. Using both sides, Mr. Yanacito?
I'm sorry?
Using both sides of the...
Both sides of the board.
All right.
Hey, good evening again. My name is John Yanacito. I'm an architect, and I'm representing Total Form Fitness, the proposed first-floor tenant at 95 Montgomery Avenue. And the space in question is highlighted in yellow here on the site plan, which is here. So the proposed scope of work will include a change of use from office space to a personal fitness center, which also requires a special permit for indoor recreation and family entertainment facility. This application was also presented to the planning board on December 7, 2023, for review of the special permit, and was referred to the zoning board for consideration of one area variance and two special permit variances. The area variance is for off-street parking, and the two special permit variances are for the use setbacks and for the hours of operation. Again, all the interior, all the proposed work is internal, there's no proposed work on the exterior of the existing structure. On the off-street parking variance, the existing parking is currently non-conforming with the total of 46 parking spaces required and 10 spaces provided. The proposed change in use will increase the parking by 26 spaces to a total requirement of 72 spaces and 10 spaces required, 10 spaces provided, a deficiency of 62 spaces. As per the zoning code, the existing office use requires 13 parking spaces, which is one space for every 150 square feet. The personal fitness center will require 39 spaces, which is one space for every 50 square feet. The proposed fitness center will not function as a typical gym, with maximum pieces of exercise equipment tightly spaced within the floor area, and it will not require this 50, this 50 square foot per parking space, or this one parking space for 50, because this is, so we're not going to have just equipment laid out as a typical gym tightly, tightly spaced within the floor area. The day-to-day operations of this proposed fitness center will include individual exercise programs with personal trainers, and the total number of occupants will be similar to the existing office use of one, one space per 150 square feet, because we're not having so many, so many pieces of equipment in this space, so we don't need as many parking spaces for this, for this gym. The property currently has 10 spaces onsite, and there's also 12 permit spaces along the front of the building, which the owner of the building pays for and provides for the tenants of the building. And there are also metered parking spaces along Montgomery Avenue and Brook Street to meet any additional parking needs. On the first special permit variance, the minimum required setbacks for an indoor recreation and family entertainment facility use is 100 feet from every lot line. This existing lot is 100 feet wide by 100 feet deep. It is, it is non-conforming on all setbacks, and it cannot comply with the 100-foot setback because the property's only 100 by 100. All of the day-to-day operations of the proposed fitness center will occur within the building and will not impact the non-conforming setbacks for the proposed use. And then on the second special use permit, the required hours of operation for the indoor recreation and family entertainment facility use are 9 to 10, Sunday through Thursday, and 9 to 11, 9:00 a.m. to 11:00 p.m. on Fridays and Saturdays. Our proposed hours of operation will be 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., Monday through Saturday, and closed on Sundays. So we're actually proposing hours of operation that will be less than the required per day and per week. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Yanacito. Before I go to the board, we've had many different fitness applications before the board, whether it's a CrossFit box, or one-on-one, or Taekwondo. It may benefit to explain a little more the operation, because people are accustomed to, let's say, an Equinox, where, you know, from 5:00 to 7:30 during the week, it's a mad rush, and, you know, 2:00 in the afternoon, it's empty. You may want to explain a little bit about their...
I have the owner of the gym with me tonight, so he can come up and explain the operation a little better than I can.
Yes, please. Yeah, just a brief explanation, and the board will ask any questions.
Yeah, I was trying to explain it, but I mixed it up a little bit, so I'll let you...
No, no, that's fine. I just want to be specific. You're the architect.
My name is Leo Lopes, I'm the owner of Total Form Fitness, 22 Concord Road, Ardsley, New York. So I have a personal training business, it's one-on-one fitness. So a client comes in, and he meets with his trainer, and that is the way they work out. You don't come in at off times or random times to work out by yourself, you have to be with a professional to work out. That's the business.
And how many of these sessions are going on at one time?
It could be three or four.
Okay.
Four trainers and four clients, usually. That's pretty much the majority of the sessions. It could be less throughout the day. Like you said, usually in the morning, we have, we're usually busy from like 6:00 to 9:00 a.m., and then it starts to kind of slow down a little bit. Around 11:00, 12:00, it kind of dies out until maybe 3:00, when the kids are getting out of school. And then, again, around 6:00, it's pretty much 6:00, 7:00, we, 7:00, we don't have sessions usually. Our last session's around 5:00 or possibly 6:00.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Mr. Kalan, do you have any questions or comments of the applicant?
Yes.
Mr. Yanacito?
What's going on in the second floor?
The second floor is office space.
So how does that correspond to the 12 permit spaces? How many of those go to the office?
So I'm not sure how they, how they divide it between the office spaces. So right now, the building, the existing use previously was office on the first floor and on the second floor. So they have the 10, 10 spaces in the back, 12 in the front. I'm not sure if it's first come, first served on those, and then everyone else uses the meters. Just not sure how that works with the building. Do you know how the building works?
You may have to come forward, please. I'm sorry, but you're in good shape. You can keep coming back and forth. That's what you do. Why am I apologizing? Show us how fit you are. This counts as cardio.
Pick this thing up. I'm not sure how the rest of the units work, but I was given six spaces on my lease.
Okay, that's, that's part of my question. So you already have enough parking for all your staff?
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Kalan?
No.
Mr. Miller?
I have no questions.
Mr. Conway?
Yes, a couple of questions. Just so I'm clear, and this is, is appointment-only training?
Yes.
Okay. And what's the range of customers or clients, however you refer to them, that you anticipate having at any time, any given time?
The amount of clients?
Yeah.
I would say four, four or five.
Okay, and that'd be the same amount of number of trainers you'd have working at the same time?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything further?
Nothing further.
Thank you, Mr. Conway. I don't have anything at this time. I make an application, open the public hearing on this. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second.
Mr. Kalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Sir, would you like to be heard? Come forward, name and address for the record. The meeting's finished.
Good evening. Frank Sweeney, 22 Lakeview Avenue, and I'm the existing chairman of the Northeastchester Civic Association. At First Blanch, I'm going to take a look at the differentials of what's required. 80%, 90%, 70%, 87% differential. We try to jam too much into the existing application when it minimizes the capability that there is not enough parking anywhere in town. That I'll give you. But particularly in this area, which sits directly across from the park, if you're familiar with the triangle, there's nothing there during the day at all. This is zero. Those spots are fully taken. So I don't know where we're going to come up with the capabilities of appeasing the requirements for the training center. I'd like you to consider, is that, is there another alternative? I mean, I know that the, pretty much 72 spaces, I don't know where we're going to find them. I mean, if it was one, two, three, four, we may have an option to find them, but 72? I don't even think that there's 72 around the entire park up there on the triangle. I don't think there's 72. And that would be in the case where no one else was using the facilities at all. The other area is that they're proposing a startup time of 6:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. This building happens to face back onto Woodruff Avenue, which are three homes directly behind it. We have some concern about a 6:00 a.m. push-off. I mean, maybe at some of the other clubs that are in commercial areas, 6:00, maybe not too early. But for this particular area down here, we've got three homes directly behind this building. I'm sure maybe they're not going to be out there running around in terms of outside the building, but I think it's extensive in terms of the time that they're looking to do. All we ask is that you take your time and fully understand the capabilities of where we're going to try to find the spaces for this application. That's all we're doing. We're somewhat concerned, but I don't see any alternative to what we have on the books right now. So I, I, I think it's a good opportunity for the building to have a workout center, but there also happens to be two or three other workout centers on the same block. I don't know, everybody, I don't know how many people work out. I work out every day, okay? But the idea is to have three sequenced in the same block. Maybe it's a different, a different clientele, I don't know. I asked you to give serious consideration to the hours, where we're going to find the parking, and what are the alternatives to not having enough parking. We surely don't want them going back on Woodruff Avenue, which is a residential area, which is right behind this building, and we don't want them going down on Montgomery, further on down the street where there's homes that are basically two and three stories. So we ask you to be cautious and consider the area, the homeowners, and the capabilities of trying to come up with an alternative to the space and the size of the equipment that he's going to use. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney, for your presentation. Sir, would you like to come forward, name and address for the record, please?
Good evening. My name is Tony Schkurtay. I'm the owner of eighty-two Brook Street, just across the street from Craft Maga, which is the Center for Fitness there, and I've been there for fourteen years. I speak also on behalf of my other neighbor, Robert Imperial, number eighty-fourth Street. He couldn't come tonight because of rain thing, but we are concerned about the parking. In fourteen years, we have been directly impacted by Craft Maga. We cannot even park ourselves. I can prove to you, and you can prove yourself if you want to, by pulling all the tickets for double parking in front of my own house, in front of my own driveway, because I have no place where to park anymore. And this is only because of Craft Maga. And I'm not talking about the parking there, because, believe me, there is no parking. If you guys are going to think that there is parking, there is no parking. So that is number one. Number two, I, again, I appeal to the board to request the police tickets, and I repeat, police tickets for calls from all our neighbors that we have because of the operations of Craft Maga since early in the morning, and especially on Saturdays and Sundays. You cannot sleep. So the thing is, look, America is land of opportunities. Everybody has a right to do their own business, to prosper, and absolutely do that. But what is happening to us? We're good people, we pay our taxes, and definitely we're not getting any service from the city. And the other thing that I want to point to you here is that we have pointed many, many times, Brook Street is a county street, as far as I understand, and we cannot even have a slowing, slowing for the cars, the yellow, what you call that yellow thing that, for pedestrians to slow down, for cars to slow down for pedestrians?
Crosswalks.
How many times you had kids that has to cross the street just from Craft Maga to, to, to park on the Brook Street? And I'm talking about fifteen feet between them. There is no way. There's no way. And, believe me, this is crowding the whole zoning area there, and this has nothing to do with the business and, and, and the business opportunity. Believe me, in this time, America needs businesses. This is a tremendous opportunity for an entrepreneur to put their own money and their own, uh, work into, to, to generating new businesses. We have no problem with that, but as a community, and I'm across the street, literally, as far as I'm sitting from you, Mr. Pillar, that, that's far. Where are you going to park? There's no lie. Ask the city town. You guys make so much money just in the two-hundred yard between seventy-two Brook Street and the end of the, of the Bagel Shop. Tons of money the city's making. You know why? Double parking. There is no parking. You add another business that is going to open since six AM in the morning, it's done, the entire area. We already have enough, uh, so much traffic in the morning, you know it yourself, because of the Bagel, even though that I'm a very good customer of the Bagel, thank God, they're great business, et cetera. Again, you cannot park. I have three cars. I have to park in front of my own driveway and get a ticket. Where should I go? There is no way. There is no way. And I want to, to, to make my, my voice very much heard, and I believe that there is going to be a lot of complaints from all my neighbors, because this is completely unacceptable. And again, nothing with the business, nothing with the, with the, with the entrepreneur that is trying to put his own money onto this and grow the place. There's no way of where to go. That's all.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, name and address for the record, and proceed.
My name is Joe Brusko, sixteen Appell Drive, East Chester. I'm here on behalf of the, the tenant. I'm not familiar with the parking at all, but I am familiar with the tenants, so I'm here to talk on their behalf. I'm an East Chester resident, also a client of Total Form Fitness, except for a couple of breaks from knee operations and the pandemic. I've been training there for over eleven years. I can tell you the staff is not only knowledgeable, but extremely professional and courteous. Their clientele are mature professionals, who most of which are also longtime clients. Their gym is very well-maintained and constantly being cleaned. The training is a one-on-one session, and all the years I've been going there, the most I've ever seen is one to three other people working out at the same time as I have. I usually go late afternoon, so I don't know what the mornings are like. In these challenging times where landlords and towns try to find businesses that are going to be successful, I'm confident that Total Form Fitness will be a tremendous asset to our community. Again, I'm not familiar with the parking at all, as this gentleman just explained, but I am familiar with the tenants, and they've been around for a long time, and they're very professional and, and courteous.
Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing on this application. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, at this time, if the applicant would like to reply to any of the public commentary, feel free to do so.
So I, I think just to, to state it again, I think based on, on the day-to-day operations of this particular business, we believe that we're either going to keep the parking requirement exactly the way it is for the office spaces, or even less. The fifty, the one space for fifty square feet doesn't apply for this particular day-to-day operations, because it's not, it's not, doesn't function as your typical gym. And, and we're willing to, to accept a condition of approval, that if this gym ever changes to a, to a traditional gym, they would have to come back for reapproval or something.
You're reading my mind.
That's frightening for everybody. Continue, Mr. Yanacito.
So, so that's, yeah, so basically, we believe that, that we're, we're actually keeping the parking at the existing condition, or even less with this, this type of day-to-day operations on this business.
Well, and furthering that point, before I go to the board, we, in a mature community like East, mature, meaning old, not meaning emotionally mature, we find this problem in places like Garth Road, Main Street, where we're predominantly built up, and frequently we have applications for special permits on Garth Road where the use is exactly the same, and the application reads three, four hundred percent because of the similar situation. If this remained an office, let's say with my law office, you may get nine, ten people at nine o'clock for a closing, and then at two o'clock, the same rush. So it, it, Mr. Cahill's point and your clarification are very important toward that end, and a, I'm not foreshadowing, I'm going in any direction at the moment, but a conditional approval based upon that type of traffic would alleviate the issues of parking and the character of the neighborhood and the negative impact. But that's, that's just my comment. Let me go to the board. Mr. Cahill?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm familiar with the neighborhood a, a, a long time, you know. We're not talking about what happens with Little League during the summer and the spring. People are parking all over the place. We know the condition, we live in the town. I understand what happens down there. But as Mr. Pillar pointed out, it's because of, of the size and the requirement that you need the number of parking spaces that you need because of the, the business itself. Your argument is very strong that if you're only doing one-to-one training, and my question about having your employees already parking, because that's always a concern when we open a new business, where are the employees going to park? So if you've already got your employee parking, and you're only going to have another five spots, and, you know, I'm not going to, I don't know the, the man's business, but if he tells us that his business is, you know, most six to nine and four to six, I'm not going to dispute that. I'm not saying it won't be crowded. I'm not saying that there isn't a lot of parking down there, but for the first time in a long time, for me, I don't feel that the, the variance that's required is really what's going to happen. I don't think it's, you know, we're not going to have that kind of traffic for this particular business is, is what I'm saying. But I, I do understand, you know, why, why the residents would, would feel that way, because it's a busy area, there's a lot going on over there all the time, so.
Thank you, Mr. Cahill. Mr. Miller, anything?
Uh, just two points. One, we have, as you know, we have one of these fitness centers in the building where my office is located, and I, I think at most, there's maybe six people at any given moment in time when it's the most busy, three of which are trainers and three are clients. So it's, it's never really been an issue for, for me in my building, so I don't really think the parking is going to be such an issue. As far as you just mentioning a condition, I'm going to beg you and beg my colleagues, please do not try and condition something on this becoming a traditional gym, because we don't have a definition of what a traditional gym is, and it's just going to create more problems. So please don't beg for a, a condition that's going to cause a problem.
Yeah, I just, I just think that the fifty, fifty, one park space for fifty square feet is more geared towards a traditional gym versus this type of-
Yeah, we understand that. We understand that. Well, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Get Mr.-
What I'm saying is if, if you try and create a definition of, that doesn't exist in our zoning code, you're just going to cause more problems for us. So, but I understand what you're saying with the condition.
Okay, Mr. Conway?
Nothing from me.
Okay, so I said what I had to say, but counselor, because the applicant is going to be limiting the scope of their application, I believe that we're right in maintaining the public hearing closed, and I'm going to ask the applicant to submit a, a conditional request that will be taken up by, by resolution. Is that acceptable?
As, as long as there are no new factual issues that are going to be rising as a result of what's being submitted. If the application is being changed in any way or modified in any way, I think the public would have to have another opportunity to, you know, review it and be heard, but if it's just a matter of the type of approval that he's requesting, I don't believe you have to do that.
Okay, so then, Mr. Yanacito, I'm sure you've heard this in some of our applications before. Let's take an application where someone's putting an elevated deck, and as a condition to their application, they have to install ten-foot arborvitae, and they must maintain them at a minimum of ten feet. I would ask you to submit to Mr. Herbert something along those lines stating, I'm not putting words in your mouth, but something along the lines that maximum training capacity at any one time will be twelve people, or ten people, whatever is reasonable. It's that we're not going to police that, but that if there becomes a change in the gym use, that, that conditional variance by operation of law will be withdrawn. So like, for instance, if you decide to put equipment on the floor and you have forty people checking it at one time, the variance would be violated by operation of law. So I would ask you to submit that. Does that sound reasonable, counselor?
It does. It also becomes an issue for how it's enforced by the town, but I, that would not require any additional public hearing or anything like that. That would be fine.
Mr. Herbert?
Yeah, that sounds fine.
Okay, so Mr. Yanacito, you have homework.
Okay.
You'll get us the conditions to the application, and I'll make a motion to adjourn your application for resolution at the next meeting.
What I would suggest, I'm sorry, is that when you submit something, I would tailor it specifically towards the type of operation that you discussed tonight, and if I understood correctly, it is a appointment-only, one-to-one with a maximum of X people, you know, between whatever hours there are, that I, I would, you know, just be as tailored as you can.
Okay.
Okay, so I make that motion to adjourn this for resolution at the next meeting, contingent upon approval of the conditions. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahill, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Is the board going to publish the documentation that the gentleman is going to submit?
First of all, I'm not, you don't address the board by hollering in the crowd, that's first of all. The public has, the public has been closed on this. Secondly, everything that is, I'm sorry, presented here today is part of the public record. So all of the documents submitted, all of the commentary, which a stenographer prints out and we approve at the next meeting, it's all public. There is nothing private.
So where do we find it?
Well, you will find it in the building department if Mr. Herbert wants to provide it, but at the next meeting, it will be voted upon.
And, or just to clarify, the, the resolution will be voted on, and the resolution will be a matter of public record. The resolutions and the documents are available in the building department, and some of the documentation may be available. A lot of times, people come in and say, "We didn't know about this. Why did we not get this available?" The building and planning department post a lot of things that are available, and if they are not posted through the site, you can come in and request to see whatever documentation there is with respect to an application.
Okay, and just for, to clarify for the entire public, again, we're a quasi-judicial tribunal, we're an appeals court. There's not one element of any proceeding that is not part of the public record. So every comment a stenographer takes down, every piece of paper that comes before us is part of a public record, and there is nothing that's confidential. And whatever's submitted will be part of a application and a resolution that will either be approved or denied at the next meeting, and that is a public record. And then that variance will be part of the building department record as well. Okay? Okay, thank you, and thank you.
Great, thank you.
Okay, next item of new business, item number four, twenty-three dash thirty-eight to ten Hillside Place. Applicant, come forward, name and address for the record, and proceed.
Good evening, members of the board. My name is Gregory Ketchapoli, engineer on the project at two-ten Hillside Place, representing Gentile Construction, the owner of the structure. We're here to seek three-
Excuse me, excuse me, can you please take it outside, gentlemen? Grade school, proceed.
Yes, we're here seeking approval on three variances, all of which are not being created. They're all existing non-conformities. We have a rear yard setback, a one-side yard setback, and a parking variance for one space. The proposal includes the reconstruction of the existing roof, which is, I don't know why it's not showing on the screen. The existing roof is a flat roof, and we would like to change it to a hip roof by raising it, making it one elevation. In addition, we'd like to add a seven-foot overhang to the front of the building. Impervious coverages remain the same.
Are you trying to get something up?
Would you like to, if it's not coming up, would you like to take-
Sure.
-the paper application and put it up?
Sure.
We're all millennials here. We need visuals. It's very hard for us young people.
I wanted the video.
So we've got a flat roof, six and a half foot drop vertically, and then another flat roof section. We're looking to raise the roof and do a hip-style roof.
Can you speak into the mic if you don't mind? Our videographer's not getting the sound, and our stenographer's going to curse at us.
Can I take the mic with me?
Yes, of course. No singing, but you can take the mic wherever you like.
So should I go back to the flat roof, or did we absorb that part? Should I go back?
We got it.
We got it.
We got it. You were raising the roof, not metaphorically.
Right. And we're changing it to a hip-style roof. As you can see here, one elevation across. There are proposed columns for the seven-foot overhang, which is going to go on the front of the building, and not changing any setbacks other than the front yard, which is, which will remain in conformance, but the variances are existing nonconformities. And that's, that's the project.
Okay. Thank you for your presentation.
Thank you for the hard copy.
Okay. To the board. Mr. Cahalan, any questions or comments?
Yeah, I'm just going to comment, you know, I got to tell you, we see a lot of presentations. This is terrible. I don't know why the building took it. I told them when I saw this that they shouldn't have accepted. You gave us one picture of the site, you know, and these plans, if, you know, we're not professional architects. A lot of these guys, they deal with it, but I was very disappointed in the presentation. Even though it's a simple presentation, I would expect a professional to do better. So that's my comment.
Mr. Cahalan, Mr. Miller? I have no questions. Mr. Conway?
No questions for me.
I don't have anything. I make a motion to open this matter to the public for public hearings. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, back to the board. Mr. Cahalan, anything further?
Nothing further.
Mr. Miller?
No.
Mr. Conway?
No.
Again, I think you've addressed the area variance tests, and at least to my satisfaction, I'm only one vote, but I make a motion to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Number five on the calendar, 23-39122 Montgomery Avenue. Name and address for the record, and please proceed.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. My name is Stephen Accinelli from Venneruso Curdo, Schwarzencurdo, on behalf of the applicant. Here with me this evening is Leonard Brandeis, the architect, also my client. Representative is here, Michael Semenaro, also with his son. I want to start out by wishing everyone a happy and healthy New Year. Haven't heard that yet tonight, so I wanted to.
Thank you, Mr. Accinelli.
You're welcome. So this project requires a single area variance for a rear yard setback at 122 Montgomery Avenue, which is in a ZB, I'm sorry, GB zoning district. The property currently consists of two improvements, a detached garage in the rear and a dwelling structure as the principal improvement on the property. The property already contains the improvements that are pre-existing nonconforming. And what we're proposing is the removal of the existing improvements, including the detached garage, which is significantly pre-existing nonconforming, and replace it with a one-and-a-half story, single improvement structure warehouse building, which we've, we've located the property, the improvements on the property, setback, going into the rear yard setback for a couple of reasons. The first reason is it's more, that way it's very consistent with the streetscape of Montgomery on that side of the street and the adjacent properties, all of which are commercial. The adjacent properties all contain improvements that are very close to, almost up to, their respective property lines. Our warehouse structure will be five feet off the rear property line. However, it will be in the rear, generally not visible to neighboring properties. All the adjacent properties, rear yards are essentially, and side yards are essentially not usable, given the very limited area that exists behind there. And we respectfully submit that the proposed improvements are, again, consistent with the character of the neighborhood. I did for the record submit my statement of principal points relative to the five-factor test and the balancing review. We will provide required parking on-site, so parking is not an issue at the site. And I have no further questions. Again, Mr. Brandeis is here. He can answer any design-related questions relative to the project. Other than that, I have no further comments.
Thank you, Mr. Accinelli. At this time, let's ask the board, any comments or questions? Mr. Cahalan?
No.
Miller?
No.
Mr. Conway?
Yeah, sorry if I missed this in the application, but what exactly is the storage facility going to be used for?
Basically, materials storage.
Material storage?
Right. My client, my client and related entities, they own various properties located in the town, Village of Takahoe, so they're going to use that, that building to basically store materials to, for their other properties in the area.
And how much activity does your client anticipate at that facility, or how much turnover? It's not the way of putting it.
I'm sorry?
How much turnover, like, you know, coming and going at that facility?
I can defer to my client.
If you don't mind.
I think that would varies, but.
Mike Semenaro, Five-Foot Old Road, Bronxville, New York. So we have a lot of properties in and around the area. So normally what we've been doing post-COVID is storing a lot of our materials. It's basically like if we're doing an apartment over, some flooring, some tiling, our guys on a normal circumstances would go there in the morning, we'll load them up with all their materials and their stuff that they need to repair or do what we're doing in around the neighborhood or areas. That, along with some construction stuff, we have a construction outfit, so we'll bring, we have some backhoes and stuff like that that we want to store. Everything will be self-enclosed. The only stuff that will be stored on the outside is the parking. If one of my guys is coming there, we want to park, we'll go in there, we'll load our stuff. If there's a snow and emergency, we probably would come out of there with our, if our machinery should need be, our plows, stuff like that. But everything will be self-enclosed, except for the three parking spaces on the outside.
Got it. Thank you.
Anything further, Mr. Conway?
I had a quick.
Counselor?
Yeah, just, and we've had this come up before in this area. Will there be any work being done or fabricating, or this is just going to be a warehouse?
No, we're not fabricating anything. We don't, we don't fabricate cabinets, and we don't do any of that.
Thank you, Counselor. I don't have anything at this time. Make a motion, open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Would anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please come forward. Give us your name and address for the record and proceed.
I represent the Northeast Pacific Association. This may be a blessing, this application. The house is in incredibly bad shape, and it's been that way for quite some time. So this may be a positive. The only thing that kind of caught my eye, it's a story and a half, which is basically the size of the house that's there currently. If you're going to use it as a construction site to store equipment or materials, along that same line, most of those buildings have either a four- or five-foot fencing front on the building itself, rather than just having a garage on the front of the side. Directly across the street, we have condominiums, just a little bit up the street from where this building proposes. There's a stretch of land between Loak's property and this particular product, which is about six or eight feet. I was just trying to determine and understand what they're going to do with that piece of property. Are they going to leave it as a part of the corner piece of property, which has a meter in front of it, and then move the building over far enough that they can get it on the property? I don't know if they've taken a look at that level of detail, but the idea is, is that there is a right-of-way in front of this property that has a town meter in front of it. So all I'm asking is that, take a second look, see what they need. It may be an impossible thing to overcome. The only thing is, I agree with the new construction structure, that it looked similar to the other buildings in the area. Everybody knows Mr. Loak, he's a, was a first-class builder and architect, and I think he did his building in great taste. So if this is going to be adjoining that, I'm hoping we're going to have the same type of environment in terms of the capability and working along with the new owners. So that's my comment.
Thank you, Mr. Sweeney. Would anyone else like to be heard on this application? Okay, before the applicant has an opportunity to comment on the public, I just want to be clear that when items, the footprint of the new construction is available, it's right there, and things like rights of way, impervious surface, and other things are addressed by the Building Department at the time the building application is submitted. So we're really only hearing the fact that this current nonconforming structure is being torn down, and another nonconforming structure is being built up, but I do appreciate the commentary about the character of the neighborhood. Mr. Accinelli, would you like to comment at all?
I have no comment, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Mr. Cahalan, do you have anything?
I doubt the town is going to take the meter out.
Anything further, Mr. Cahalan? Nothing? Mr. Miller?
No questions.
Mr. Conway?
No questions.
No. You've answered my, to my satisfaction, the five-part test. I make an application, motion actually, to adjourn this matter for resolution at the next meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahalan, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good night, everyone.
Mr. Chairman, are we going to do the seeker element to this?
Oh, that's right. I am sorry. On Montgomery, my fault. I should have made an app, it's not too late. I make a motion for a negative declaration on the seeker for this application as taking charge as the lead agency on this. Is there a second to my motion?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Now you're going to close the public, well, if, we should keep the public hearing open just for a minute to see if anyone has any comments on the declaration, and then you can close the public hearing.
Well, it's only words, so I'll make an application, open the public hearing on this. If anyone wants to be heard on the impact on the community, because on the seeker, that's an acronym, S-E-Q-R-A, we have to make a declaration that it has a negative impact. Would anyone like to be heard on the impact? Okay, seeing no one, I make a motion to close the public on the seeker application. Is there a second?
Second.
Yeah, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry to get you up. You were not the fitness center, so this may be a lot of work for you to get up and down, but I appreciate it, Mr. Accinelli.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Okay. Item six, 23-27360 White Plains Road. And if I'm not mistaken, before you proceed with your name and address in your presentation, this also requires seeker review.
Correct, yes. This is an unlisted action, according to seeker, so.
Okay. Mr. Herbert, do you have a recommendation?
Well, no lead agency has been declared yet, so one option would be you could review this, keep the public hearing open, and then the planning, you could go to planning, and planning could declare it. The planning board could declare itself to be lead agency to run the rest of the seeker review, if that's what you would like.
Hey, Counselor, on this one, I'm, well, I haven't made a motion yet to open the public hearing, but I will at some point, and I'm going to leave it open because each application has its own set of facts, and for a zoning board, it was a simple review from Montgomery Avenue for White Plains Road. It's a little more complicated, and the seeker review should come from planning. So I'm, thank you for your guidance on that. So that was all procedural mumbo jumbo. You may now proceed.
So, Mr. Chairman, just clarification. Are we referring this back to the planning board for seeker review?
That is correct. That is correct.
Right, right, but it would, you wouldn't be voting on the variances necessarily right now.
From what I understand, what you said, we're going to have to keep the public hearing open.
Correct.
Have the planning board look at it.
That's right.
And then they're going to have to come back.
That's right. So a motion to have it resolved at the next meeting may not, will happen, based on, won't happen based on that. But again, being the lead agency, we're not on this one. There's too much to review, and I think a planning is a more appropriate agency to hear the seeker as it relates to this application.
Agreed.
Go ahead.
Good evening, Chair, members of the board. Louis Campana, architect for the applicant. I'm having the same issue. The video is not working.
Remember, you're in a municipality. Technology's not always first.
I've got every option in the book here, but it's not working for some reason.
Okay, do we, thank you, Mr. Herbert. How come the first guy?
Oh, he had it working.
Something came.
Works best, something.
Well, there it is.
So, once.
What'd you do, kick it?
Well, here we go. So once again, Louis Campana, architect on behalf of the applicant for 360 White Plains Road. 360 White Plains Road is a 57,000-square-foot lot located, a corner lot located in ORB Zone, and it is directly adjacent to residential zone as well. It sits on the north, northeast corner of White Plains Road and Cypress Road. And here you can see, we have the existing, the existing building on-site, as we all know as the Chase, the Chase Bank. There are two other businesses on the first floor. The second is Sharon Williams, and the third is a nail salon. In the basement, we have the Gracie Martial Arts Academy. As you all are probably familiar with, the rear, the rear parking lot is seldom occupied by vehicles throughout the day and during the evening. And what the applicant is looking to do is, well, we're seeking three variances to permit the construction of a two-story commercial building. On the, on the site plan here, towards the bottom of the lot is the existing building. And what we've done was strategically locate the second building, the two-story building, behind it, centrally located in that parking area. The first variance that's required is for the setback to the parking lot. Now, since this property is within 150 feet of residential zone, that setback is 20 feet, but this is a pre-existing nonconforming condition that we're seeking to retain. The second variance required is for parking. Now, just bear with me a second. The parking demand for the existing building is 67 spots. Currently on-site, we have a total of 105, which also includes five handicap spots. The proposed building with two retail spaces on the first floor and two office spaces on the second floor will require 33 spots for a total of 100 spots. This also includes six handicap spots. And then finally, we have the third variance required, which is for commercial use, fronting a street which leads into a residential zone. So we feel that although this, this building will be fronting on Cypress, whether it be setback towards the northern property line or where we have it here in line with the, with the side of the existing building, it is certainly an improvement, and we think a better use for the property in general. a better use for the property in general. Thank you.
Thank you for your presentation. Mr. Cahillan, any questions or comments?
I do. So, this is going to be, I'm just trying to find the rendering. You provided us a rendering of the new building?
Yes, I, I did. Can we?
Thank you.
So I don't know why the color is all distorted. So, this is...
So that's going to be the size of the new, the new building?
Right, and then here...
And that is...
This is the side of the existing building to the, to the left, and then the new building, setback from the existing building to the right, at the bottom of the sheet.
And the rear yard setback is going to be what?
Well, in this zone, it has to be 40 because of the proximity to the residential...
But you're asking for the variance...
The setback to the parking area.
Yeah.
20 feet.
Okay, so, there are homes right behind that.
Right.
The fence that runs there, there's all kinds of homes back there.
Correct.
So, that's one thing that I'm, I'm fighting with right now. Number two is, are you putting basements in this building?
There is a basement, for storage.
Basement. See, that's the other thing, this area floods severely. In fact, the area right behind there, all those homes back there, don't have basements because of that. They're all built on grade. So, to disturb the water table, to put in basements, you're putting them in just for storage, I would imagine, for the tenants.
Right, and also, the structure next to it, fronting White Plains Road, has a basement, which is actually being...
Yeah, one little piece in the corner, right?
No, it's...
You have a business, you have, you mean, there's a basement that runs across that whole building?
Yeah, there's a stairwell also on both, on the backside and side.
Right, but that's where the karate place is, right?
Right, but then there's also storage area.
They don't let me go down there when I go by, so I wouldn't know. So, but my point is, is I, I'm sensitive to disturbing what's been there for a long, long time. So, I, I'm, I'm questioning why you need that, because what kind of businesses do you, are you going to be renting to? You don't know.
At this point, no, we do not know.
But, these are not supermarkets that would require inventory, and most of America today doesn't keep anything in inventory. If you try and buy anything, you have to order it online, right? So, I'm just concerned about that piece of it. So, those are my, my two thoughts.
Thank you, Mr. Cahillan. Mr. Miller?
I have no comments.
Conway?
No questions from him.
I don't have anything at this time. I make a motion to open the public hearing on this matter. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Cahillan, all in favor?
Aye.
When anyone from the public like to be heard on this application? Please come forward, give your name and address for the record, and proceed.
Hello, good evening. My name is Paul Quintero. I'm a homeowner at 60 Howard Avenue. We've been here in the town of Eastchester for 20 years. My comments, I will limit it to, I guess, the items that are subject to variance, and I want to talk on two, if I'm understanding this right, it's the first time I do this. One of the tests is, will this variance create an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, or create a detriment to nearby property? So I want to speak to the detriment. And the third is, is this variance substantial? So let me start with the second one, which I think is more obvious. I think I read in the application, the answer was no. It was hard to me to imagine how you could put a new building in the middle of a parking lot next to a neighborhood and not consider that substantial. So that, that to me was interesting, but...
We get that a lot.
Say again?
We get that a lot.
Okay, so I was like, wow. But I want to talk about what I think I saw there, too, in terms of parking. So as was mentioned, there are four businesses, a jujitsu location, a nail, a Sherwin-Williams, I think, and the Chase Bank. I didn't go through the traffic study, but I can tell you as a resident, here's what happens. When you want to go get your nails done, or, and I forgot to mention that across the street is a country market. So what happens is, at the high quality of time, which is the weekend or a Friday, people are getting their nails done, people are getting their shopping done, people doing the class for jujitsu, and that entire area gets packed. In fact, so packed, that it was recently repainted with arrows to create one-way directional flows, because the traffic in that area gets very, very congested from Friday through the weekend. That was recently done by the town. That was, as is, irrespective of this new building. So, again, I do think that, that this is substantial, and that's the second reason for that. Let me just highlight now a couple other things that I wanted to say real quick. One moment. As to the detrimental nature, so when I first bought, and then when we refinanced, I learned something new, that when you own a property next to commercial properties, it's an impairment to your value, and the appraiser will discount, probably today, anywhere from a low of $20,000 to maybe $50,000, the value of your property, just because you abut a commercial area. I was there before Walgreens was built. When you go to your second-floor home, and you're looking straight at another commercial property, it might be a high and best use for commercial purposes, but if you want the quiet enjoyment of your home, it's not a great site. So what did the town do? Thoughtfully, said, "Well, we should put something to protect that. Let's put up trees." Wonderful. But in my time here at Eastchester, not once, not twice, but three times have the trees been either cut, or, right now, completely eliminated. Which means not only do homeowners like myself have an unsightly view of the existing Walgreens, which, and now this new building would be another example, but you have the lights, you have the traffic, you have the trucks that come in for garbage, you have all those things happening, and there's no way, even with a big corporate company like Walgreens, to enforce something that the town said had to be in place. Now I see a two-shop retail center that we still don't know the nature of, what type of business, who knows? But if we can't get Walgreens to comply with what we're doing here at the town, I have no confidence that some small business is going to do it. That impairs financial value to the homeowners here in Eastchester, that impairs the quality of life for homeowners here, because we don't want to be looking at a commercial building when we sit in our bedrooms. The last thing I want to add on that piece that was mentioned before, we talked about the enforcement, talked about the valuation, talked about the view. I'm glad you mentioned the flooding. So, when Walgreens was built, this beautiful mound, and presumably this would have to be built, right, and dug up, beautiful mounds are created that during this rain, and thank you all, gentlemen, for being here today, get covered with plastic. Beautiful to hold the dirt down, but what happens in practice? The only time I ever had flooding in my basement was right when the construction happened, because the water runs right off that plastic and right into our yard, saturates the backyard, there's no way around it. The only time it's ever happened, and we've had a lot of rains. I don't know what the construction will be for this, but I can, I can, I will predict that something like that will happen again. The other point that was made, oh, I already mentioned it, but the type of business. So, currently, it's been quiet at the back of Walgreens, and I'm mentioning Walgreens because it's right adjacent to this location, and you can see both, because there's no trees, there's nothing to block it. But the noise, and people, sometimes young people, will park behind these buildings when it's quiet and it's dark, and noise and things can happen. We don't need more loitering, we don't need more attention or activities in that area. So again, quality of life, I believe, is detrimentally impacted by this space. So, to conclude, there were two of the five criteria that I read here. One, is this substantial? I believe it's very substantial to put up a brand-new building where nothing existed, for the reasons I mentioned, the traffic and everything else. And is this detrimental, not only financially, but from a quality-of-life perspective? So as a resident, an owner, one that has three kids here, they all go to the school, 20 years here in Eastchester, I respectfully request that you seriously consider either denying or finding other alternatives to create this, because I've lived this movie before, and I'd hate to repeat it. Thank you very much, gentlemen.
Thank you for your presentation. Would anyone else like to be heard? Okay, well, the public hearing is going to remain open, I'm going to let the applicant reply in a moment, but I just want Mr. Quintero and other people who have commented and may want to comment that also, this will be before the planning board at the next meeting, and the impact on the neighborhood will be heard and decided upon by the planning board under the, what's known as seeker review. So, if you may, if you would like to reply, you may.
Sure, just a few simple comments. So in terms of the undesirable nature, so right now, obviously, it's an empty, an empty parking lot. The backside of the existing structure has just a couple openings in it with large mechanical equipment on the roof overlooking the properties that are to the east. So this building will, in effect, screen those elements from, from the neighboring residential lots. The type of roof that we have, which could be considered a false roof or a parapet of sorts, it's quite high, so all the mechanical equipment will be concealed beneath the top elevation of that parapet as well. The materials would be exactly the same as those materials on the existing building, and the lights that we are proposing will be down at an elevation which, and the intent of that would be not to spill onto the neighboring properties. In terms of the substantial nature, so this is a 22% variance in terms of parking. Currently, like I said, there's 105 spots. What will be required based on the existing and proposed uses is 100 spots, we are proposing 78. But as the traffic report suggests, based on observation and studies, the demand, the increased demand with the proposed structure will be between 55 and 60 parking spots. We're providing 78. And in terms of the detriment, which had to do with the basement and flooding issues, so when we get to the planning stage, you will be able to hear the sediment and erosion control measures that will have to take place on-site during construction to mitigate these issues. Also, the properties that are directly to the east sit up about five feet higher than the parking lot elevation currently. So, the intention there would be that any runoff would, would have to be detained on-site, you know, during that period of time. There will also be a new drainage system that will be installed as well. That's it.
Thank you, thank you for your presentation. So, the public hearing is going to stay open on this, and at the next meeting, depending upon the planning board's findings, the public will be allowed to be heard on it further, and the board at that time can ask any further questions. And also, the applicant is free to modify the application in any way if they wanted to provide screening or other things. Mr. Cahillan, do you have anything at this time?
I mean, just, just, to just talk about in general, we sit here for a lot of these, you know, impervious surface calculations and stuff like that. So, you know, I hate to be the cynic, but, you know, engineers scale and they do math. Mother Nature doesn't care what they put down with the denominator and denominator. The water, sometimes it comes out of the sky, you can't account for, so the, the, I appreciate that they're saying that it's supposed to stay on the property, but realistically, when we have these tremendous storms, we have flooding all over town, we have flooding in places, I'm, I'm almost a 30-year resident of the town, and I, I've seen places in the last couple of months that I never saw flood before, because of the way the water comes down. So try as they may, and I understand you can only follow the code, and I understand that, but I, when I hear guys get up and say, you know, "We're going to contain the water on-site," I smile and usually don't reply, but tonight, I just think that, in this particular area, we've had, you know, that area has flooded so many times, the town has spent so much money on remediation down there, you know, that's why I made my comment about, you know, disturbing something. When you disturb something, and you're trying to improve, and I'm not saying you're not going to improve it, but you could also hurt it a lot more, and you don't know until Mother Nature wrecks its havoc on you. So, and then at that point, you know, everybody stands there and goes, "I don't understand why this happened," you know, and we all shake our heads. So, that's my comment.
Mr. Cahillan, Mr. Miller, anything?
Nothing.
Mr. Conway?
No questions or comments.
He doesn't have anything further? Again, this application's going to stay open, and the public will be having, have an opportunity to be heard, depending on the findings of the planning board. So I thank you for your presentation, and you'll be back at the next meeting contingent upon the planning board findings, so thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Okay, have a good night. So we have one more item on the calendar. This is application 23-32-49 Main Street. Before the applicant comes up, tonight, we seem to have, have a good night, we seem to be having a civics lesson tonight in many forms. So, the board, the obligations and the qualifications for board members are essentially that you live in the town of Eastchester, and that you're willing to volunteer your time for no payment. Over time, Mr. Cahillan is pushing on 30, I have 30 years in the town, and these young whippersnappers have a little less, but they've been in town a long time. And you, that's why we have the same hairline, so...
You're never fired today, are you?
So, my point is that we know, almost every applicant who comes before us, we're affected by almost every application. We, so, the idea of our interest in an application is just inherent in being involved in, in community service. Certain circumstances require, however, recusal. And in this instance, I am required to recuse myself from this next matter, and not only can I not decide this matter, I can't comment or be a party to it. As a local real estate attorney, I was involved in the transaction prior here, too, and I have at least one client who has contacted me about this application, who may be speaking tonight. So I have to recuse myself, I can't even, under the law, I can't even be present, so Mr. Cahillan is going to conduct, is going to act as chair, and ferry, ferry this application through, and Mr. Cahillan, when you're done, I will return and finish the meeting up.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this is application 23-32-49 Main Street and 27 New Street. Is the applicant ready to go?
Mr. Acting Chairman, may I just ask our head of planning a question? We now only have three people sitting on this application, so the effect of the vote would be required a 3-0, correct?
Correct, but because the seeker process has not been open, you cannot, you have to wait for that, a negative declaration to be issued.
So basically, they're going to, you know, we're going to go through the motions of the hearing, but we're going to keep the public hearing open as we did with the last application, and I would suggest that planning also be the lead agency on this application.
No, my only point to the applicant is that he understands that with a three-person board, you got to go 3-0 to get this application through.
We understand, yep. I was part of that civic lessons as well, yeah, appreciate it on behalf of the chairman. Good evening. For the record, my name is David Smith. I'm a planning consultant and principal with Planning and Development Advisors. I'm here tonight on behalf of Angelo Agavino and Eastchester Manor Developers LLC for their application at 249 Main Street. Joining me is Angelo Agavino, the property owner, and then Mr. Tony Freida, who is the project architect. Just by way of background, as you recall, back in 2020, Mr. Agavino had received project approval from the planning board after getting variances from your board for a slightly different project. It was a 15-unit, four-story building located on 249 Main Street. In the interim, Mr. Agavino has purchased 27 New Street, which is the property to the back, to the rear, and has revised the plan to include a proposal for 25 units, 15 one-bedroom units and 10 two-bedroom units, supported by 36 parking spaces, and both covered in c... surface parking configurations. The site plan is before you and was included with the package that was submitted as part of the application materials. So the, essentially, the layout remains the same from the prior approval, where you have one way in, one way out from Main Street with circulation around the building, and then there is now an added one-way entrance coming in off of 27 New Street with associated parking on that particular piece of the property. The application requires seven variances. I'll go through those and summarize those briefly in detail, but they've been explained in the application package. So the first two variances, as indicated in the notice of denial, relate to building height. In the, in the code, maximum height is four stories. We're requesting two additional stories to accommodate the, the building program. In addition, building height is limited to 45 feet, and the current submission includes a building height of 67.12 feet, which is in excess of 22 feet. And one of the, the graphics that was included with the application package included a comparison, actually, there are a couple of different exhibits, but one included a property that's just located a couple of doors down, and perhaps at some point, Mr. Freida will point that out in one of the illustrations, how you have in the neighborhood existing buildings which exceed the four-story height, and how this proposed building is somewhat comparable to the buildings that's at 267 Main Street. So that's building height. The required number of parking spaces is 43 under zoning. The submission provides for 36, which is a deficiency of seven. We've included in our application a report from DTS, Provident Design Engineering, which includes some information and backup relative to the Institute of Transportation Engineers' evaluation, and how, given this location in a somewhat urban setting where walkability is, I think, a key factor, somewhat proximity to mass transit, you do have bus routes that are located right on Main Street, but we think that the, the submission is adequately parked for, for this particular proposal. And then the variances related to impervious surface coverage, the landscaping area along the perimeter of the, of the project site landscaping, including the provision for snow plowing, and this was one of the issues that came up with the last presentation or last submission that your board had, had reviewed, and the applicant had indicated that they would provide as a management program the snow removal off the site. And the last is the, there's the, the parking angle when you back up. There's a requirement for 24 feet wide. The plans, as shown, have a backup aisle of 22.6 feet, which is a deficiency of 1.4 feet, but in the exhibits that we provided by Provident Design, they show how a vehicle can adequately back up and maneuver from the, the parking that's proposed in and around the building. So the, Mr. Agavino has made a significant investment in, in this particular property. I think some of the benefits that we've tried to outline in the presentation include that you're adding 25 new additional households that are within walking distance of your Main Street corridor. Certainly, I think that's one of the, the benefits. They're going to have some disposable income that they will spend on a, on a regular basis on goods and services local to the, to the community. And it, it takes a property that is dilapidated and in need of some investment and putting it back into the, the stream of commerce for, for the town of Eastchester. So, and Tony, do you have anything you want to? Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, that provides a summary of our presentation and the materials that were included to your board. Be happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'm going to go to the board. This is unusual, usually I'm first, but I'm going to start the other end. Bill?
Sure, a couple comments I want to make in quote-unquote questions. So on your application that you projected, you're going to have 31 parking, or projected need of 31 parking spaces?
Thirty-six.
Thirty-six, okay. And there's 25 units, 10 of which are two-bedroom units, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so I'm just trying to understand how you get to that projected need. So you have, you're, you're going to have 36 spots. I think what I read in the report was you have 36 spots. You only project the need of 31 for those 25 units.
That's correct, right.
Okay. So most people I know, couples I know around here have two cars. They also occasionally, excuse me, entertain guests with cars. So I just, I don't understand how you can get, like, include only 31 spaces would be sufficient for 25 units when 10 of those are in particular are double-bedroom units.
So I'm, I'm not a traffic engineer, although sometimes I play one on TV, and just because I have a driver's license sometimes, in some communities, that qualifies you as a, as a traffic engineer. But the studies that Mr. Dempsey prepared were based on, it's the Institute of Transportation Engineers, which is kind of like the handbook or the guidebook for transportation planning, and based on the bedroom count, based on kind of the location in a more urban setting with availability of mass transit, that those studies have shown that, that the 36 space, the 31 spaces that ITE indicates that that would be sufficient. So we're basing that based on the survey data that ITE is, and that's kind of a national survey for, for these types of uses. It's not a standalone type of survey. The, typically, again, in these types of settings, a one-bedroom unit, yes, typically you're going to have one car per, and then the two-bedrooms, again, it all depends on, on the couple that's, that's living, the household that's living there. I think certainly there is a, a marketing issue with this. Mr. Agavino understands that his tenants that come in, if they have, if they want two cars and there's availability, then they can, he can provide that, but there's, he'll know that there's a limitation on the number of parking spaces.
What if all 25 units have two cars per household, if you want to call it that? Where were those extra 14 cars parked?
Mr. Agavino, as part of his marketing for, and renting those units, is going to have to limit the number of cars or vehicles that a tenant can have so that he can manage that as part of the, the rental program.
Okay. I just want to address traffic quickly. I've had three kids go through Waverly School, and the drive to that school and back with each kid got increasingly worse and more painful. So in my view, the traffic situation there is, is pretty bad as is. Adding 25 units to that area gives me concern about the traffic situation down there, and I'm not surprised that we've already gotten feedback from residents in that area who've expressed concerns about the traffic impact. So I just want to say that. Last, I just want to talk about the school impact. I'm sure you're aware that our school district over the last 10 years has done two bond offerings to finance two renovations, both of the high school and middle school, to address the increasing population of students in our town. I see that you cited a Rutgers study, I think that's what it was called, which concludes somehow that of 20, the 25 units will have at most, in quotes, I think you used that word, that term, an increase of only two students to the school district. I just, I don't see how that can be true, especially when you have 10 double, two-bedroom apartments. I mean, I don't, so let me ask this, like, where that's, how that study is, or that test was determined, do you know if it was national data that was relying on, or if it was more tailored to small suburban communities like ours with well-regarded school districts?
So is, is, those are great questions, and this comes up all the time, particularly with, with multifamily developments. The Rutgers study is based on the, essentially, the New York metropolitan area, and in specific, just the New York region. So essentially, it's looking at places like Westchester County, Long Island, and I forget the exact number, but it's the, the number of units that they've surveyed is in the thousands, and so that's how they determine this kind of generation rate. I don't have my, the submission materials in, in front of me, but I believe that there was also a supplemental survey that was...
Prepared, thank you.
That's based on more localized Westchester County survey data. I just went through the same issue in the Village of Buchanan, where they have two proposals for multifamily development, and the school issue came up again, and as part of that, we had a survey that was prepared, over 3,000 units, and I think I included that as kind of a comparable to say, "All right, here's a more localized." And the issue is that if, typically, if you have, if you have a one-bedroom, you're less, much less likely to have a school-aged child. If you have a two-bedroom, and having gone through this with my own kids, I, essentially, once you get to an age where they start going to school, you want to buy a house, you want to have a yard, so you're, and essentially, you're trading your rent for your mortgage so that you can have that bigger space for your kids. And that's typically why you don't have school-aged children, kindergarten through high school, coming out of a multifamily development like this. So that's, that's kind of, that's the, my experience and that I've had in, in Westchester County as a planner with these types of developments.
I saw that you cited data from White Plains and Portchester school districts, or the impacts projects like this have had on those school districts. Do you have similar data from projects in other Westchester school districts?
Yes. Yes, that was, again, that was part of the, that localized school district survey that I had mentioned, that we used in the Village of Buchanan just recently. So it included things like the Village of Portchester, and I had active applications in Portchester where I've been following the same issue because it comes up in every community that has multifamily developments. And the, the results are pretty much as, as indicated, that you get very little public school-aged children from a multifamily development, if you, and particularly if you're just limiting it to one and two bedrooms. Once you start adding a third bedroom, then the numbers go up, but typically, if you're in a two-bedroom and you're a family and you have kids who are going into public school, you want to move, you want to get a house, you want to have more of that room.
Okay, I have nothing further at this time. Thank you, Bill. Joe?
None.
I'm going to add my own comments. I mean, the glaring one that comes to me is the height. The height is just, I can't get by the height right now. Six stories in that area, and I know your argument is, "We have two properties around the corner," but the topography of that land is completely different than when you're proposing to put your building. Those buildings are built on hill sites. They're built into hills. They don't look like they're six stories from any angle. This is going to look like Mount Everest when you put it down on that street there. I'm sorry, but, you know, we've had this issue up in the north end. We had another application by DeChicos, and when they did the scale on that, coming down White Plains Road, it looked like it was 80 feet tall, and it was only 60 feet tall. So, I mean, I, my, my, you know, from a quality of life standpoint on the test, this, the height is, is just to me not, I, I don't see how any of us could not think that through and think that the height is a tremendous problem for this building. You know, parking being as it may, I appreciate that you said, you know, you take the snow off-site, but I think, you know, if you go to Bronxville and they've built up new residences in Bronxville, their school population has increased when they put multifamily down there. People that live on the, they have a Bronxville PO and a Yonkers address, they send their kids to Bronxville. The Bronxville school is inundated with people that I call in Yonkville, okay? So you would, you would definitely have that situation with this type of a building. I know what the data says, but we're in one of the most desirable school districts in Westchester County. And, you know, you know, I'm a banker in private life. Obtaining a mortgage in the last five years has been stressful for most, having to put that 20% down with interest rates as high as 7%. Yes, today, interest rates are down at about, you know, six and 3/8ths, if you can get one with your credit, but that's an awful lot to ask people to do, and if they want to provide the best education for their children, they're going to squeeze into this apartment building and put those kids in our school system, be it 10 kids, five kids, whatever it is. So, you know, I have a hard time accepting that data. You know, park, parking is definitely an issue. You cannot get into the local restaurant down there at a certain time. You got to drive around the block 15 times. Try to go to the funeral home when there's a big funeral. You can't park down there either. I mean, and let's not even talk about the parade, you know? We have the Columbus Day Parade, we have the St. Patrick's Day Parade. Those areas are completely congested at those times. I can't even imagine adding 25 more residents, even if they were single people, into that area. Plus, you know, the building height is, is my biggest concern. I don't see how we could grant a variance at that height. I mean, to me, I'll be honest with you, it's a deal breaker for me. You would have to lower this to code for me to even consider the other variances. So, and that's my position on it. So, that said, any other comments?
I have no comments, but I'm going to ask a favor. I know you can do this because you're very gifted. Can you bring, give us a 3D view of what it's going to look like? We want a 3D, three-dimensional view, like, most people come in now with, with the computer adamant, so we can see what it's going to look like.
Yeah, I, I just spoke to Mr. Agavino. Yes, we're working on that now.
Okay. Because that's, honestly, that's what we expect you to come in now these days with. We want to see what it's going to look like.
Yep.
So, that said, we're going to ask for a motion to open a public hearing?
I'll second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, public hearing is open. Yes, ma'am, please come up, state your name and address for the record. Oh, yeah. We don't see him anyway, the way some of us see him. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Cheryl Drose. I live at 28 New Street, right across from this monstrosity that's being proposed. I'd like to bring you back to the meeting on October 26th. I'm not sure if I'm saying his name, but Chairman, is it Nemec, had said to Mr. Agavino, what was his motivation behind this? Was it about making it profitable? And he replied, "It was about making it profitable. It was about the money. It was about making something that worked financially." And that's on page 61 and 62 of the meeting. Furthermore, one of the main discussion points from that same planning board meeting, page 83, was a concern about where the packages would be left, if there was going to be a room for that. I could care less about the room, I care more about the traffic on New Street from these deliveries that are going to be made. Years ago, there was an accident right in front of my house involving a small child and a postal service worker. The child was rushed to the emergency room. No, no fault of the child, but just to show, there's so much traffic on that street. Another incident that happened from 9th New Street, the apartment building on New Street, a delivery truck was, or a commercial truck was reversing from the driveway and actually struck the car that my child and my husband were in, and we're still recovering from long-term injuries from that. So even though this is a proposed one-way-in, one-way-out driveway at this commercial building or this resident, this apartment building, accidents happen all the time. It is so congested already on New Street, the last thing we need is this huge apartment building to create more traffic. Other concerns that we have involving all of these delivery trucks and everything else, just yesterday, there was an argument, and this is my sister here, she can attest to it, an Amazon delivery driver had nowhere to park, so he double-parks in the middle of the street, gets out, there's arguments with all of the, the cars that are double-parked back up to Waverly. Drivers are getting out, arguing with each other. Who wants to move the Amazon truck and everything else? It is horrendous already. To put this building there would just be even more chaos. I moved there almost 11 years ago, to the date. Since I've been there, we love our neighborhood. There's kids playing in the street, it's a great neighborhood. But even to consider something like this, I, I don't know how we would do it. We have the fire department right across the street from us. They have so much trouble, again, with the parking. I know everybody's concerns here tonight have been parking. Parking is huge. I don't know how they would get into this building. The six stories, I know, I don't know how they would, with the ladder trucks or anything else, but even the Con Ed wiring, the wires are going to have to go underground. Who's going to dig that up? My house was built in 1923. Has anybody considered what's going to happen to my house, that there's going to be any... Has anybody considered what's going to happen to my house, if there's going to be any, you know, damage to my house, building this? First, you have to knock down the houses that are there, and then you have to dig up, you know, foundation and everything else to put there. I have so many things on my list here. We have no sidewalk on New Street, that's another issue. I know that you talked about having a study done for parking in an urban setting, that you don't need the parking spaces, but you drive down New Street any time of the day? That should be your survey that you do, because you can't find a parking space.
Ma'am, if you could just direct your comments to the board.
Outparking, yes, okay. Sorry, sorry, sorry. What else do we have? Food deliveries, I don't know anything, if you guys surveyed that? Fire zones, if you've considered any of that? Oh, public sewage, garbage pickup? Am I missing anything, sir? No? I think I'm done. I think I've addressed everything, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
I was writing notes as the-
And the public hearing is going to remain open, so you can come back next month.
Okay.
I just wanted to address a couple of your comments, because there are people that are watching at home too, to clarify some issues. Number one, I believe you were referring to the planning board, and Phil Nemec is a member of the planning board, the, who directed those comments, but with respect to the comment about the, I guess, profit margin, or the amount of units, or amount of return that the developer is motivated by, I just want to clarify, and for those who are watching at home, any applicant has a right to determine at what point it is worth it for them to embark on a project like this, okay? And whatever level they choose for their own rate of return, or whatever it is, that is a matter that is up to the applicant, and the board has to consider the applicant's package. They have a right to that process. The fact that they are planning or hoping to earn a profit from this is really not an issue for the board to address. The scaling and the variances, and the fact that the building is higher than the law provides, means, not that it's necessary illegal, but the, when it comes to zoning, that the proposed plan is at variance with the law, and that is what this board decides. So those are issues, and certainly you are welcome, and the board welcomes your comments from the community, but in terms of the potential motivation, the applicant has a right to present whatever project that they would like to present, and they have a right to the process that we're going through now. So just so you're aware of that, okay?
Yeah, I'm aware. I just feel like, just to gain a profit and not necessarily take into consideration the neighborhood feel of everything that we have established over the past, I mean, I've been there 11 years, it's a real neighborhood, and this building is going to destroy that.
I understand what you're saying, I just, just to clarify the parameters of the board, they don't really have the authority or the ability to say you should be making less profit.
Yeah, no, I understand.
They have to kind of review the application from the four quarters, okay?
Thank you.
Counsel, can I, can I just make one comment? I think some of the things you're saying make perfect sense, but from a zoning perspective, I'm not coaching you on how to do this, but you want to go look at the five-part, the multiple tests that they have to meet to get all this done, and try and focus more on those tests as opposed to, he can't make this much money, or my kid might get hit by a car. It would be much more cohesive and persuasive.
This might not be the correct place to do it, but I was available tonight, I had to come, I had to say how I felt, and-
Well, just as a, just as a suggestion, if you believe that there is a danger to children playing in the street, that would have a negative impact on the community, which is one of the aspects of the test, so just kind of keeping you framed, okay?
Thank you. Anybody else want to be heard? I don't see anybody else putting up their hand. So, we're going to hold the public hearing open. Oh, no? Nobody. And we'll move on to-
Would the applicant get another chance to?
Oh, oh, see, that's why Alan runs the meeting, not me. If you want to refute any of those comments, this is the time.
Or address them.
Address them.
How you doing? My name is Angelo Agavino, I'm, grew up here in Eastchester, went to, you know, school here since I was a kid. I own a couple houses on New Street, I own a couple houses on Main Street. I, the reason why I think that this street needs this building, and I believe that it's going to be a contributor, it's, I'm contributing to the town of Eastchester, I think that this would be a beautiful building for that block. And that's my opinion, I know other people don't think that, but I own various properties in Eastchester, I keep them really nice. I also, you know, rent them out and, you know, take care of them, but there is a spot for packages in the front area, the first room to the left, which is the meeting room, and also could be kept, it's going to be a scan-in, scan-out door, so it will have an Amazon, when they come there with their, their device, they could open the door, and the packages will be inside the building off to the left. It's not going to be a free-for-all, but the way we designed the parking and, you know, flow of traffic is, I understand the lady's concern about New Street, that's why I didn't make it and out. You know, we designed it specifically so only people would be coming in, and majority of deliveries and stuff, what, I mean, typically, I think they would be on Main Street, coming in and out. I mean, I can't specifically tell Amazon they're not allowed to go from this direction or that. But, you know, I think the flow of traffic would go a different way. And based off the height, if you stand on Main Street and you look in front of the building to the right of the firehouse, it is actually a few feet higher than the building that I'm proposing, not saying that it's okay to build this building because of that building, but as the chairman was saying, that, you know, it's, it's just, it's a different, because it's sloped up, it, I know that property goes up on a hill, but if you're staying on Main Street, walking on Main Street, and you're looking up at this building, it's 60-something feet high, and the building that I'm proposing is going to be a similar building, like that building. It's not, it's not that you're going to walk over and see that building, like, oh, it's not, if you walk on Main, I mean, New Street, it, the building that I'm proposing would be a bit, you know, higher, but if you're, if you're looking on Main Street, which is the front door and the entrance, and if you're looking up, the building that I'm proposing is a bit shorter, if you're standing on the sidewalk or across the street, or, or looking at it. And for, the reason why I bought the lot behind on New Street was because of the fire department regulation that I have to take down the wires in the front of the building. When I proposed this building to you a couple of years ago, and you guys approved the board, I was assuming that Con Ed was going to be around 100, 120 grand, they gave, I'm sorry, I don't want to talk money, but like, they, they gave a triple number to put these wires down, because the main feed for Bronxville and Tocco comes in front of my building, unfortunately. So if this skipped a pole, I wouldn't have to have this big, so I want to develop this property and build a nice building, I love Eastchester, and I'm doing this, you know, also because of that. I think that buying this property on New Street, I could have the fire department come in and access the building without taking the wires down and going through all that. So the fire truck will have their fire access from New Street and be able to put the ladder up against the building, instead of taking the wires down in the front of the building, which I proposed last time, I had to put all those wires on the ground, but that main feed, just, it was not feasible, didn't make any sense for me to do. So I'm just, I, I found this other avenue, and I'm proposing it to you like this, and that is the reason why the building is the way it is. And I had to go up to two floors to make it make sense to have that other lot. That's my reasoning.
I, I understand, it's, you know, as counsel said, our concern is on the variances. You know, I can appreciate, you know, you're a businessman, I get that, but what we do is the variance. It's our job to consider within the law if we feel these are excessive or not, and that's all I care about. God bless you, you know, it's your business, I hope you're successful, and all I care about is what's on the variance, and how those variances relate to the town in general. You know, we're a, we're a side, we're not, we don't have sidewalks in the town, it makes the town unique in a lot of ways, and I, you know, one of the things I consider on every application is precedent. Are we setting a precedent for something else to be able to come in and develop something even bigger, or more, and better, or not better? You know, so I care just about your application and what you're asking for. I appreciate the public comment, I think it's pertinent, but this board, our final decision is about what's, what you're giving us and what you're asking us.
Just wanted to address-
I appreciate that, but I want to be very clear that we're concerned about, as counsel said, the four corners of the application. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Anybody else? So we're going to keep this open. I'll make a motion to keep this open for next month, and bring this back after it goes to the planning board, so that they can be the lead agency for secret review. Did I get it right?
Perfect.
Because this is my audition, I guess, so-
You need a second, and you should vote on it.
Excuse me?
You need a second, and you should-
Oh, should I get a second on that?
Second.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. See, I'm new at the job, sorry. So, I think that's it for tonight.
Got to bring Alan back. Alan back.
Here he goes. You can have this job.
Thank you. Board members, Mr. Callan, everybody? Okay.
We made it through.
So, I have one more bit of, I have one more action, and that is a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting. Our next one will be February 13, 2024. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Miller, all in favor?
Aye.
Good night, everybody.
Good night.